All right, seven o'clock. Go ahead and call the mayor's order. Please, a quick word of prayer. Our most kind and gracious heaven and father, we thank you for the many blessings bestowed upon our town. We just ask that you be with us tonight, that you will lead us, that we will make decisions pleasingly to you, and we will be good stewards of what you've given us. Once again, we thank you for the many blessings. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all members of the president tonight. Thank you all. Approve of the minutes of meeting in May?
We're going to approve the second.
I have a motion of second to approve the minutes of meeting in May. All of us in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, and approved. Approve of the financial statement for May?
I'm making a motion to approve the May monthly financial statements.
I'll say.
Aye.
Oh, discussion on that. The change in their own utilities.
Yes, and I did, thank you. If you will look on the city of Long and Park and Rec, the utility water should be corrected. It was classified on the council packet as electric and should have been water. And that was for, how much did that say? One seventy-eight ninety-three. Oh.
Yes.
Aye. Have a motion of second. All of us in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, and approved. Reports of the city department, fire department?
City of Long and Park Department has run five hundred and thirty-eight calls here to date as of today. Got a couple of events coming up this next month or two. We have our water pipe parade on June twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth starting at ten a.m. We have a Facebook post regarding which neighborhoods and which parts of the city will be on each day. Right now, we're doing little grant processes for a community project and some equipment for the department. Looking forward to hearing back from those. We have an instructing job at the county road shop for a stoplight class on July sixteenth, where we completed some training this month, including emergency vehicle operations course, firemanship skills, including air management, communication, firefighter survival, and patient packaging and patient care for rescue operations. We have one firefighter who's going to be instructed to this month, and one firefighter currently in five or two. We also have a wildland urban interface class coming up July twenty-third to the twenty-third. And building permits, the month of May, we had seventeen permits, and for the month of June so far, we've had four for a total of sixty-one.
Any questions? I know they've been, we're working on the tornado sirens again today. We've had a tremendous problem with electric, electrical, while lacking everything, and the power loss too. We've had some issues with the stoplight as well, but we're underdog, looking under some efforts to put some lightning suppression on those. So we may be coming at, looking at that. But we, lightning has not been our friend the last six weeks. All right, thank you. And council members, I ask apologies, I'm going to regress here a little bit. Hard to keep up here. I was, I want to read the fund balances real quick if you all are ready. The general fund has one hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents. The street fund has three hundred and fifty-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents. Fire department fund is twenty-four thousand, five ninety-five-ten. The Act eight thirty-three fund for the fire department is eight thousand, two seventy, eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy cents. The park and rec general fund has sixty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm hard hearing down here, so I just want to make sure. So you're saying we've had some lightning strike, the, I'm sorry to backtrack, some of the...
We've had lightning strikes on some of the sirens. We've had lightning strikes on the stoplight. We had some lightning damage to some of the buildings. I had some lightning damage in one of my shops. But we're going to undertake an effort to save those some restures. I think that's, I think the lightning getting out of hand, truly, with the man on the moon, it breaks that way.
The weather's been pretty rainy this spring, too, there's some...
It's been a very stormy season. All right, thank you. I apologize for jumping there. The planning commission, they did have their meeting. They approved the aim high coin laundry, which is going in where the old hardware store, last car wash was at. Construction is underway on that at this time. They did approve the subdivision of Weaver and Say Street by member Robert Hetner. I believe it's six or seven lots in there, and that was kind of all they had. They're not going to have a meeting this month.
That's on the paper, yeah.
Oh, yes. Do you want the, what, Joe T., Joe T. Sabre means?
Yes.
He did go in, thank you. He went in across from Keys, there, by Keys Toyota Yard, and has a mobile truck that offers barbecue and stuff. But they don't have any business this month, so they will not be meeting this month. Police department, I have this, Brad, he's still recuperating, I believe, after his rig. They've had, they had one car that, they had to misuse with a, I don't know, I even say this, the same, a person that needed their, their services, he got a ride to town, and I think he kicked the one down on one of the cars, but they were able to get that fixed for minimal cost. They've had some warranty work they've had to deal with from some of those cars, and Ford has been covering that free of charge, and they've been circling those units as they could to get them fixed. I think the two trucks will be in the Ford on, I think they're, I think they're, I'm pretty sure they've got those in and they're working on finishing them, so. Today, the, our police officers do, do a good job. They, they put up with a lot, and we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, from a personnel standpoint, how, are we, how many are we down right now with Brad being out?
I think Brad, Brad is going to start looking for a officer to replace Tony, and I think, last I can remember, he told me that he was going to probably try to bring in the other officers.
And that's going more down right now?
I'm pretty sure, Brad.
Thank you.
They've been doing a good job. I can't, the men and all, and the ladies have all stepped up, and they've really, with all they've been through with the chief and assistant chief and every other, they have really stepped up and done a good job.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to vote on, on the procedurally? Are we going to vote on the improvements that the planning commission made?
Ah, there wasn't no reason to do so. One was a food truck, it only come to their approval, but the other one, in my opinion, what I was told legally was the existing business act.
The subdivision, wouldn't that be a condition?
I know, it was flagged out first, I think. Now, that was all existing things, but it's been, that subdivision there has been in there since the seventies, if I remember.
Okay, subdivision.
Yeah. And then where the coin laundry going has been used since the seventies. All right, sewer department, Joe?
Not really much. You got the, our minutes, excuse me, financials, about the only, got your correction to work, if you will, is they're still working on the control panels, and they should have all the control panels reworked there pretty quick.
They, they are working on it today, I know, but they're pushing, working on that. Sewer department still continues to grow. I can't say nothing about the sewer committee and Joe's leadership on that. The growth rates, I sat in on a little seminar class the other day, and, you know, they're predicting that Bologna will add another thousand homes within the next five, eight years. Faulkner County, the unincorporated areas did add, you know, five to six thousand, and of course, you've always seen the numbers from time line and everything, and they've all done a good job.
Thank you. I mean...
But it never, it never...
You know, I, go along with that. Darlene Conner, who is, who runs our office, celebrated twenty-five or twenty-fifth anniversary of working for the sewer department this month. Saw longevity going on there, and we've got other city employees, I know, Kelly and Sherry, I'm not sure who else, that have been here at least that long, if not longer.
All right. Sewer department still on work ahead in the next four, five years. For open to do that, it's over.
We're ready for it.
Uh, street department, the weather has just been beyond belief wet. Matt nearly got stuck today working on one job. They're continuing to work, you know, putting in things and fixing and spraying when they can. You know, we'll look at what we can do with paving maybe toward the end of summer. We've got decent product that sell asphalt and really, I don't have to tell anybody goes to the store or anything else, what's, what's going on in the press, that we'll, we'll see what we can get done. Sidewalk project is moving along. My purple has had a lot of the weather delays. We've got the grant in, as far as I know, on the extension to take it on down to Falk Run and some of those other subdivisions, and it is my understanding, Brady helped me on this, is we did get the lighting project for one oh seven and sixty-four in front of the high school, correct?
Yeah, I did make it to the, this month's metro play meeting that works up along, but it gets off.
And I think Trey Foster is doing the work for free, and Trey White has been electrical engineering, so a lot of people that should handle that. So, I'll let you know when I know more on it.
So, to clear it up, make sure I understood it correct. So the lighting projects from the light down to superintendent's office, correct?
Correct.
And then we did get phase two, grant funding?
No, I have that, no, that funding, from what I understood, was enough to go in front of the high school, down to the admin building, with lights.
Okay, so even some down Main Street?
Yes, from, from the stoplight, I'd say to about the current, again.
And then did you say, we did get funding for phase two?
No, 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 we've got that put in.
Okay.
But no, we, that was some funding that had been out there for a year or two. Brady did kind of ask about that, got it off his head then.
The sidewalk just seems to be moving along pretty quickly also. I'm really amazed with how fast that's...
Considering the weather, considering the weather that they had, not interrupt that. I'm going with the council's permission, I'm going to skip over parking rec and we'll dive into that at the end, is that okay? I want to public comment, we'll save those for when we get ready to dive into parking rec, if that's okay to everybody? All right. Department, before I go, and I'm always forgetting something, I'll, real quick here, you did have a letter in your packet from me, and I wanted to read this into the minutes. OEM has redone some addresses in the town, and read these into the minutes of the current street or drives that we have that are private. Glad to call James, I belong to Councilor James, in the nineties on this morning, and I had, the Shannon Drive is private, not city maintained. Country Meadows, which is down, close to Merrill Church, that will be private. The new one that OEM has added that will be privately maintained and not any city street program. Will be Coil Drive, which is off Church Street where those duplexes are at. Avery Evan Lane, which is off Simpson, which is where Mr. Sanson has those duplexes right there, across the creek there. And also want to read in that when we did an X for help out there for sure, the Benny Dallas lane is not city maintained. All right, like I said, no planning commission. If I forgot anything, I didn't mean to.
So I did have a few questions, just curious about the Dexter Street here, and I've got more clarity, but just for the citizens, a couple of citizens that were just asking about it, just so I can understand, and for their understanding. So I guess originally there was some mishaps, and so this is a change being requested by nine-one-one?
Yes, yes, yeah.
The house members, you got out of sequence, yeah, councilman, and, and it was very confusing when you come out and start letting the calls, they were out of sequence and made it hard for nine-one-one, so.
Right.
It's been, been like that for about twenty-five years, so I found that we got a straight path.
This, this wasn't my fault.
That's right, it is.
Yeah. But OEM did, OEM has been working on that. If they have any questions, they can call up there too.
Yeah, I don't think it was anything drastic, there was just curiosity, and I was like, well, I don't know any more than you, then I'll find out.
Yes, it is, yeah.
That's what I understood at the back, it just wanted to, for the question, so people would understand.
Two thousand and ten, when it came out, they were trying to do the census, it was very confusing, the census makers, they were trying to educate people, and it was hard to do.
And then, like I said, if anybody has any questions, nine-one-one addressing across all parts of the county, or down to the Falkner County Office of Emergency Management, let's see if I can remember, five oh one, four five oh, four nine three five, ask for people.
Who's that?
Yes, who's that guy? Department recognition, the council, and this looks out for me.
Thank you. So Joe kind of spelled my thunder there. I was going to recognize Ms. Darlene for her twenty-five years, but, you know, we are certainly appreciative of her, but she not only takes care of the sewer department, she volunteers in the concession stand, she helps everybody else in the office, so just when you see her, make sure and tell her thank you, not only for the sewer parts that she does, but just everything else in the city that she's a part of.
All right. While we're there, the fireworks show is going to be happening, can you allude a little to that a little?
Yes, sir. So we are doing the fireworks show, we will start at seven, there's actually a band that's going to start at six-thirty. You can set up whenever, there in the grass area, we're going to have all kinds of inflables for the kids. This year, we're adding water slides, because it's so hot, we have a cooling tent, and we also have a foam machine coming, so it should be good and messy. The fire department's helping me with getting water to everything and making sure that you set up where it needs to be, but everything's free, we've had lots of donations and people helping us with that, so everything's ongoing, and it will be at seven o'clock.
So it starts at seven, at the high school parking lot?
At the high school parking lot.
Long Island High School parking lot. Fireworks will start, I guess it does.
It's going to be at dark, yeah. Normally, it's about nine fifteen-ish, but, you know, it'll start when it's dark.
Understood.
Wonder if anybody would like to donate?
If anybody would like to donate, you can get in touch with me, Steven, write him a check, I'm going to catch you, just kidding. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Yeah, if you, if anybody would like to donate, obviously, it does also allow to do that kind of stuff, but we have had some very generous donations, and so everything pretty well is going to be taken care of, regardless, everything's going to be taken care of, but if anyone wants to help volunteer their time, it's hot, and we need lots of help setting up the circus tent, for instance, cooking.
Cooking, what, two thousand hot dogs, I think, last year?
Last year, we cooked twenty-two hundred hot dogs, it gets a little warm there, and Gary is out, he cooked for us last year, so I don't know, we're going to recruit for that, but anyway, if you want to help or volunteer, we will always say volunteers.
Be there at seven o'clock, if you want to.
James said he's going to volunteer grill, I think.
Yes.
A whole bastard shit.
All right, thank you for that update on that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The Long Island Company, the company corporation, I don't see Chad here?
No, don't have a lot on the agenda, it kind of takes me a while to go. We're kind of prepping for the teacher pair thing, it's kind of a event we do for the teachers to show their recognition, appreciation. That's going to be August twelfth, and not just teachers, but all the staffing at the school district, which is, they're anticipating four hundred and something, people are coming through as far as staffing, so they are our largest employer in the city, and we want to show our appreciation. And then also, we're starting to prep for Eagle Pass next year. Typically, we're looking for the fifteenth and sixteenth of May. So, this year, we learned a lesson, that it's really hot in the afternoon, so we're going to try to maybe split it, do concerts and stuff in the evening, and then fish and dirt me five K the next day. We'll see how all that plans out over the next few months.
All right, thank you. Chamber of Commerce purchased an ad this month in the five oh one website, call attention to the amenities and opportunities that are available in Bologna to work, live, and fight.
There's a message here from the chamber, and one from Mayor Scruggs, if you haven't seen this, pick up a copy, they're out there in the hallway for all of y'all.
You're, you're the British part of that opera.
We appreciate the mayor getting that message in, we're on a little bit of a deadline, and didn't have a lot of time.
It's a good idea.
Our monthly luncheon will be this Thursday, June the nineteenth, at eleven-thirty at Central Simon's. Our guest speaker will be Marie Coats, J.P. for District Two, and she'll be speaking on behalf of the Faulkner County Animal Shelter, and as always, the public's invited. Once again, we want to thank the fire department for placing our flags out for Flag Day, it looks really nice, and we appreciate that. We've added two new board members this month, Amber and Bryce Casado, they're called Gracey Jajitsu, and I think they're going to be really good members for our board, and we're excited to have them and to be working with them. Several of our residents have participated in the cereal drive, sponsored by Tom Brennan and D.H. Green this past week, and maybe if they're here next year, we can do better.
I apologize, I...
That's okay, we didn't have much notice on that either.
I, I got a little social media, and I like, I didn't really know, but I'll, I'll be there.
We didn't have much notice, but we'll, we'll do it next year, okay? And we've still got over eight hundred and something boxes of cereal and, and some food bank, and anybody can still get it to Spirit of Bologna or any of the local food banks that are here in town.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. We have the planning commission here again on the agenda, I guess just to remind that there will be no meeting this, this coming month, if they don't have anything. All right, city offices will be closed Friday, July fourth, for Independence Day, might know that. Don't know many old business, new business. We have presentation of the twenty-twenty-three audit report, you should have a copy of that in your packet. Has been presented to legislative audit, and they got it on their website, look it over as well. I'll move for adoption of this, receipt of this audit.
For who?
I'll say.
Okay, have a motion second to receive the twenty-twenty-three year audit report. All of us in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, that audit is available for anybody to look at in paper or online. I guess I got to hit on myself a little bit, didn't I? Address changes for OEM. Like I said, I think we take that in the ground pretty good. I apologize to the folks, since it's happened, I know it's not fun, but we didn't do it, but I do think that what I'm hoping will come is getting emergency services there and family there. All right, we will circle back around, Parks and Rec, Mr. Shannon, you can give us the reports before we dive into any of them.
So, spring, fall, or spring, baseball and softball wrapped up two weeks ago, we've got signups going on right now for co-ed softball, and we're trying to introduce men's league softball, and we're going to give that a go and see if we get any interest in it. If not, we'll just do the co-ed and kind of go from there, but registrations are open until, I think, the end of this month, and we'll start softball July seventh.
All right. I'm here having a seat. We, we said, I know you all have received lots of emails, returns, some negative, some good, both sides. I'm going to tell everybody that tonight, when we go in, move, it's good to be civil, be mindful, don't defend or run anybody down. We're here to discuss this in an open forum. I have refrained from saying a whole lot or anything, because it needs to be discussed, and questions could be answered and concerns fleshed out, but I do, I do ask you to be civil, be mindful of people's feelings and everything, and the end is again. So, all right, with that said, Mr. Andrew Collins, come up and voice your concerns? And I will, I'm sorry, the council should have pretty fifty packet programs on, both sides.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to begin by expressing my sincere gratitude to everyone who helped resolve the issue following the end of season tournament two weeks ago. Our players did finally receive their rings last night, we had an end season party and presented them there. They were absolutely thrilled, thank you everyone for making that possible. Now, I would like to address some more pressing matter. As you all are aware, there have been ongoing challenges within the softball and baseball programs this season, as well as in previous seasons. Today, I am here to propose a constructive solution. I respectfully request that the city council consider establishing a dedicated board or committee to oversee the operations of both softball and baseball programs. Each sport would benefit from having its own committee, composed of an odd number of volunteers, to avoid tie votes on important decisions. This structure would promote accountability, reduce perceived or actual favoritism, and ensure decisions are made through collective input rather than by one single individual. These committees would serve as the main point of contact for coaches, players, and parents with concerns or suggestions. They can be responsible for overseeing evaluations, drafts, tournaments, and rule selections such as UTRIP and USA Softball. Any issues beyond the scope of the committees can then be escalated to the park and rec director, who would have the discretion to bring them to the mayor's office or city council if needed. Excuse me. This structure would help reduce the volume of direct inquiries being routed to city council members and the mayor's office. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the recent improvements made to our city softball fields in preparation of the tournament that was scheduled for this past weekend. It's commendable that the facilities were brought to such good conditions to ensure a safe and enjoyable experience for visiting teams. However, this swift enhancement raises concerns about the maintenance standards during our local recreational season. Throughout the spring, our city's youth softball players were contended with subpar field conditions, which not only affected the quality of play, but also posed safety risks to our players. This disparity in field conditions between the regular season and tournament events suggested need for a more consistent maintenance approach. I urge the department to apply the same level of care and attention to our local league as is extended to external events. Ensuring consistently safe and well-maintained facilities for all players, regardless of the event's profile, reflects our community's commitment to supporting recreational sports and the well-being of our resident. If any questions, that's all I have to say.
Council members, any questions? Your president, thank you. Thank you. Should I have a question?
There you go. More along, like you said, the field conditions to play with, we have to deal with.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
Around more along with the definition that we have to play with, the biggest IT issue... It's a big safety issue. I know I can speak for one of our girls on our, my oldest daughter's team, you know, the rocks were really, really bad. And we had a girl, basically playing pretty good coming home, running parties to it. I don't understand why there is a big difference in the condition of the baseball fields compared to our softball fields. If it rains over there, we can't play there. How are we, why aren't we playing over here? It doesn't make any sense to me. And our last two team games we played, as you know, it's kid pitch. There's no pitching on it. We've got hard packed ground with nothing for kids to pitch off of. It's very difficult. Fortunately, I have a, um, a temporary one to put on the ground without key protection. But if we hadn't had that, we wouldn't have had anything for our girls to pitch off of. But my thing is, is our girls deserve exactly, it, it should be equal across the board. For whether it be boy side or the boy side. I don't feel like the softball side of things gets looked at and cared about very much. It doesn't seem like it's a priority. And I think that has a big deal with the amount of signups we get. I think if more care was put into it, you'd probably see an increase here players. And we need that here instead of, I would rather go 45 minutes to hour anywhere else to play ball. And I'm not the only one that says that. As a parent standpoint and a coach, I feel like if other people are allowed to play their child up if they want to, that's their decision, their, their decision, not somebody else's. Cause I can call with any, in the surrounding areas and I'll talk to them. I can, I was able to do that if I wanted to sign up there. Anywhere else or here, can do it. So I feel like as a parent and coach, that's my decision, not somebody else's. Now, I understand if it's a little kid going from a six year to a teenager, but if it's one age group, it's not that big of a difference. And as a girl that's played with her friends and beginning to own that team, she should be able to go ahead and be able to play. Not have to start over and try to, to learn a new coaching process or, or, uh, try to get a new teammate. I feel like you're taking a player's ability, make them take three steps backwards instead of moving them forward. Well, if you keep everybody together, if you play, they, they benefit from that. But my main concern is the safety aspect of the fields and level playing field. I would like to see it, you know, the same on both sides. But I don't, I don't have anything else other than that, unless y'all have anything.
Other questions? Thank you. I appreciate, I think that's speaker of the council and we appreciate that civility. And I'm gonna play this here. Um, council here, um, going on with Terry, address these concerns?
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would just only input, as far as the maintenance concerns, I would like to hear from Mr. Terry on that. Anything that goes into a staffing, uh, matter, I think we need to go into executive session. But I do think we need to talk about the, the maintenance issues, the rocks, those kind of things. I think that's something that we can all flesh out here. But if it comes into a matter of an employee being reprimanded, we don't need to do that here. It hasn't been our common practice to do that. And that, that's all I'd like to say on that.
Terry?
So as far as the maintenance on the fields go, um, most people don't know this, but I've been trying to get the softball fields redone. Uh, the infield's done. Started working on that last year, getting estimates and all that kind of stuff. That's something that's a priority to myself. Yes, there are rocks on the field. Yes, we did get some work done after the season was over. But that work was not done on the two fields that need, the rocks remain. When I'm out there, I'll pick up a handful of rocks, throw them in the trash can. And it's basically a rock farm right now. Uh, we've got to get some, we've got to get some more, uh, some more dirt to bring in. And it's just a matter of money. It's a matter of, of that. Right now, it's myself and a part-time employee that, that works on the fields during the season. I take care of most everything in baseball. He takes care of most everything in softball. When we don't have games going on, one of the parks could collaborate to get them done quicker and to, to take care of some major issues. But during the season, um, our main consolation, main, main project is getting the fields chalked and lined and ready to go for the, the games that night.
Terry, what do you have as far as setup to get the games? Cause you got two, two, uh, contexts.
It's myself. We've got eight fields total. Most of the time we'll have seven going, um, on any given night, between, between four to seven going on any given night. Uh, it's myself and Cory Wells. Cory does, um, works for the parks part-time and then does some other stuff around the city. Uh, so when we have games going in softball, we take care of those, get the, get the field drug and chalked. Uh, Vanessa helps mow it a little bit, but, um, just getting those ready. Especially with the amount of rain that we've had this past year or this past season. Been really, really difficult to get any time and to actually get the fields up to where they need to be. I agree. There, there's, there's issues with the fields. I mean, that's, that's not new to me. I don't favor baseball over softball. It's just, I can only do so much at a time.
Let's, can we talk a little bit more about the rocks in the field? So you say you're working on, um, getting those redone. Describe that to me. What you're thinking? Uh, are you thinking about replacing all the dirt up there? Digging it up, replacing the dirt? We've talked about the cost. Would it, would turf in the long run be, be better? I'm asking you that. These folks here hold the purse strings.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't pull it out of thin air, but if, we need to think about, what kind of money are we looking at?
As far as when the fields were constructed, I believe they put a layer of, um, of clay with, um, oh my gosh, I'm drawing blank.
The red dirt.
Red, red.
The red brick, crushed brick.
Well, it's red dirt with a shell just to create the base layer. And then, um, there was top dressing that was put on. And then, um, the crush bridge is what goes on there right now. We're, I'm moving from the crush bridge over to a field conditioner that helps it to a water better. But it's a, it's a slow process. But where we're at right now on most of the fields is that, that top layer of dirt, the three inches of dirt that should be on there has washed and gone away. That's why I'm going with field conditioner because it holds it on there for much longer.
Does it cost us to replace that dirt?
To replace the dirt?
You looked into that?
I looked into it. It's about 15 to 25,000 dollar per field.
Last time you had brought me an instrument back there in the spring period, I think it's around 60,000. And again, I'll, you know, for the public and the council and everything, the parking rec fund, the weakest fund we got.
I agree.
It, it's got an envelope of about 15,000 a month. Get a little bit more from the, the fees and stuff. It's a tougher about, it's the toughest fund we got.
So it, so say 60, 25 to 60,000 dollars. And then how long would that last us? Will we have to do that every year or?
No, 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 no. We wouldn't have to do it every year. Once we get the fields in, in the right condition and maintain them from there, that will hold for 10 to 15 years before we have to do much more major, major work on it. Uh, field three at the baseball complex was done two years ago.
Two years, yeah.
Two years ago, and it's still in, in the same condition because of, of the maintenance that we've done on it. We haven't had to do anything but basically mow that field and, and.
So that would be why the baseball field was in better shape than the softball field.
When that project was undertook, if I remember right, digging the baseball field, um, that contractor was able to raise it some, so it held on the ground.
We do outfield work and everything.
We had to do outfield work because there was massive gaps in the grass. Uh, it wouldn't, wouldn't grow grass. And there was a big drainage problem in the outfield. The infield, um, it got about an inch, inch and a half of, of dirt put on it, plus the top dressing, the conditioner. So.
They completely done it again.
They did a real good job. So, but each field is, is between 15 to 25,000 dollars to get it where it needs to be, um, without doing anything in the outfield.
Can you say that's only two fields at the softball that's in that condition?
It's got the rocks on it. All four fields of softball need to be, need to be reworked. The field three and four, there's the rocks on them that are, which we actually did work on field four this year and got rid of several rocks.
It does look bigger than it did first the year.
There's still.
On the list of, man, it looks a lot better.
So with, with those two fields, I'm sorry, I just lost track of what I was about to say. What was your question again?
Are those the only two fields there that are like that or are they all that?
All four fields need, need some more work, need some more dirt brought up with field conditioner and all that kind of stuff. Uh, the two in the back, field three and field four, they're the ones with the rocks. They're the ones that need the most attention. But field one and two, if it rains, even after the work that was put in, uh, last week, if it rained, we're still not able to have games on it for a day or two because it's still holding water.
Part of that, correct me if I'm wrong, is improper dragging over the last
Yes.
five or six years of starting from the inside out instead of outside in. It throws all the dust and dirt to the outside. And if you go look at those fields, they now look like a bowl. And it collected a berm all the way around them.
Well, the berms, the berms are gone.
And I noticed y'all have been working on pulling berms and I went out there today and looked at those fields and they are not holding near as much water as they did just spring because of that.
Yeah.
Uh, baseball was pretty dry. It looked like you could play on baseball.
Yeah.
Uh, softball, if I was squeezing, you probably could play a game if you had.
Terry, since we're kind of in the middle of this, if we're council and myself and public giving overview of baseball and softball. On baseball, where are you at? How do you feel? I know that. And I can help a little bit as you told me to ask, but baseball, your biggest concern over there is the parking lot.
Yes.
And getting some more parking and overland parking line. Uh, the concession stands and stuff, the baseball are in pretty good shape.
Yes.
And the fields are pretty good shape.
Field's in pretty good shape. Field four to you a little bit of weather, but.
Field four, need work.
Yeah.
Which one is that? The southwest?
The biggest one.
That southwest? Closest to the field and cemetery?
Close to cemetery.
Not the parking lot side, field side.
So baseball, we're pretty good shape except for the parking lot and field four.
Yeah.
Okay, we go softball.
So pardon me, on field four, have we got the same problem with the rocks? Is that what it is or what's going on?
We got some rocks on it. It's just holding water.
Just holding water.
But it is the least used field. That's where the 13, you, 14, you, 15, you play.
That's a Bologna problem. What would you want that?
Yeah, but, uh, we didn't get but a couple games in on that this year.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. And we need to know where everybody at. So we, that's pretty good over here, baseball. I can say softball.
Softball, softball, we need some, we need to work on the infield. Uh, the outfield work, um, that's killing, killing weeds, beating, um, weeding, beating, all that kind of stuff with the outfield. Uh, and then sanding those, which that's something that, that need hours.
So it's all fall and concession and the buildings are in pretty good shape?
I don't like the location of the concession stand, but that's not mine. Yeah. That was, that was wearing for me. But, uh, no, the concession stand, the building, um, everything's in good condition.
So in the parking lot station?
Hanging and signage probably on the buildings?
Uh, yeah. I'd like to get some, I'd like to get the building painted and, uh, get some, get some better signage, some more visible signage for the restrooms and concession stand and all that.
So, and so the biggest issue that you've got facing here right now is those four fields of softball.
Can I ask a question? This is gonna just be a personal opinion. How did softball fields become so much worse than baseball fields?
Field maintenance. Um, and I'm not, I don't know what was done before me, but I know what, what I've asked Cory to do on preparing the fields and we're getting a better result out of it. Uh, but what Councilman Craig was saying, when, when you drag the fields from the inside and, and go out, all that material ends up on the, the grass lip right there. And we had a berm, a lip that was about four inches tall that just created the bowl that nothing could really drag out of.
There's about a dump truck load of dirt y'all scraped off all our fields up here.
So, once, uh, once the, the fields have been redone and up to where they need to be and then using the conditioner as opposed to the red, uh, brick dust or, or whatever that is, then if it's maintained properly, it'll hold for, for many, many, many years with.
Obviously, getting the fields and getting rid of the rocks is very important because of the safety of the roads.
Yeah.
But what about, um, the pitching area that?
What about the portable pitching mound or?
Well, I've actually got some, uh, I'm trying to partner with, uh, Major League Baseball and Mountain League Baseball. There's a representative from Bologna that has reached out to me about, uh, field improvements. And I got with him earlier this year about getting some softball mats with the, it'd be portable mats. But getting those so that we can just move those where they need to be. Like we, we've got the portable pitching mounds at, at the baseball complex. And we can move those forwards and backwards depending on what age group is playing. So I'm trying to do the same thing with the softball fields. We do have.
So softball does not use a mound?
It does use a mound. It uses pitching rubber.
And currently it doesn't have one at all?
We take them off whenever we drag the fields and sometimes it needs to be put back on. But that's a fun thought to me and it can be taken care of. But 10 and 12 years only to actually use the, the pitching rubber. The rest of us coach pitchers, they love.
Do you go around and look at the fields before the games to make sure chalk is out there, the mounds are out there?
Not every single day.
Do you have someone that does even at softball? And you have someone that's responsible for checking all of those?
Yes, Cory. Cory does that.
Where he's been.
Yeah.
So you check the ones at baseball and he checks the ones softball?
And I've missed out at baseball before, but you know, I was up there that night and I'm glad I didn't move the, the bases back to 65 foot instead of 60 foot. So I have to go with and adjust that and all that kind of stuff. And if I get a call from someone softball that the bases are in the wrong spot or anything like that, I can run over there. I can have someone take care of that. So, but.
So there's someone there on site that can take care of those things if they're not in place or not at the right place?
Yeah. I'll have a UFC at softball that can take care of some of that stuff for us.
I guess, you know, one of my concerns would be if the softball field is in such, if fields are in such bad shape up there, I mean, do we need to continue having games up there until we get to? I mean, I, I, I think the rocks in that field is a serious problem, especially for softball. And so, you know, I guess, I guess what I want to know is how do we fix the problem? I mean, did, you know, do we not have the money to fix it? Do, you know, I mean, what do we need to do?
Terry, Terry and I have had spirited discussions, um, about finances. Like the marriage period is something. What was it, something down the money?
I mean, I'm looking at a year, at, at the year-to-date on the Parks and Rec, just to, I'm, I'm not looking at the budget. I'm just looking at the expense statement, year-to-date. And we have a profit in the parks of, I mean, in this, of May, and this can change. I know how that works. But, you know, we've had a profit of around $50,000 and, um, you know, our account is got a positive balance. I'm not saying we need to wipe all of that out, but I'm trying to, I guess my problem, how do I fix the problem?
Money?
You gotta think on that too, though, Councilman Makers, is spring ball is our busiest time. Fall ball, will we lucky if we even break even in fall ball? Um, I've had a conversation with Mr. Shannon about even not even having fall ball because there's so many other sports that go on between the cheerleading and volleyball and football and everything else. Is it even worth us having a fall ball, uh, because of that? So you gotta think that extra money that's in the accounts, you have to pay for salaries and upkeep for the rest of the year.
Yeah, I, I understand that.
Terry, off the top of your head, what you call for fields, is?
15 is 25,000.
Is 15,000. I would try to remember that.
So I mean, I.
And we've done some.
Can we look into possibly pulling up in Jero Fine, at least get one or two of these fields looked at? Is there some of the fall maybe?
That would be my question. If softball has two fields that are out, let's get one of them really good and just don't use the other one like we're doing in baseball where you have one that's not used very often. And then we can start work on the other, but we need to do that and take care of those fields before we start worrying about paint or?
Yes.
signage or anything like that.
The, the field at softball and baseball that doesn't need to be used, it's just, it's the bigger field, and once I get baseball set out and get that where it kind of needs to be, like, we'll start using that for twelve years. So, it's still, you know, it doesn't have a rock problem or anything like that.
There, there's no way we could get all, once Terry, what, did you find the worst two fields up there in softball? Give me an estimate. If you'll give me an estimate on it, I'll bring you back to the council if we can.
Yeah, if you can.
There's, there's, there's notes up there that are broken, that needs to be fixed. Scoreboards, anything, I don't, I don't go out there much.
I believe all the scoreboards are working right now, they were pitched early part of the season, of course, with the lighting and the storms that we've had. I've got one that I know of that the innings is out on, there may be more depending on.
Field four, possibly in softball group?
I don't know, 'cause I haven't been out there, but I think there is a scoreboard that is still, which is not working, or maybe it glitches or something, because it was causing some confusion with, you know, they were telling the girls to watch how many outs they had and that kind of thing, and they can't do that because the scoreboard's not working.
Yeah, I think all of those have been, was that within the last couple weeks?
Yes.
Okay, well, I wasn't made aware of that one, so, yeah, I can't.
I, I do think, again, you said I'm communicating, and I think it's important that everybody voice your concerns, and I think it's important that the council is, is understanding.
Do you feel like you don't have enough help up there, maybe?
No, you don't have enough.
Again, all that takes is more money, more money.
Have you ever thought about having a volunteer work day on the weekend? We, we used to do that, I mean, back there, we'd have, we had.
I grew up going to them.
Oh, if you're in the old town, where are you?
That's, that's always been our, our weekend at the ballpark, fixing it up, but, yeah, I've thought about that, and it's something that, that is on the, the plan. One, it's getting really hot right now, so we're not gonna get very many volunteers, so it's kind of one of those, I gotta get it at the right time of year so we can maximize the number of people that wanna come out and do all that.
Well, I know doing the actual field, the shaping field, stuff like that, you, you need people that know what to do, but, but getting the rocks, everybody can break a rake in a quill area, you know, that could help a lot, you know, for that.
We, we, we've had some volunteers.
If you wanna do it, I'll, I'll be one of the first ones to volunteer, go ahead, break by.
We have had some volunteers over the last few weeks wanting to do stuff, and, and we're working with them on, on getting some stuff for them to do, and that's, that's high, high on the list.
I think that, if we can coordinate that and come out and work, at least get them to a point where we can start to prepare it.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot, sounds like we need to get to that point.
Yeah.
So let me ask you this, you said Cory is hard come, he's the one that takes care of softball. Does he need more help, or does he have the time to take care of softball in a way that is just as good as any other sport in our town? Or, or our kids can enjoy it just as well as they do anything else?
We can always use more help, but it comes down to the money part. But with, he's got the time to do it, but during the season, it's just, you know, get it dressed and get it ready to play. That's, that's kind of where our focus is, or, we've, we've shifted our focus from, you know, just kind of laying off during the offseason to, hey, we're gonna get this field taken care of, we're gonna move over to this field, we're gonna get all these little projects taken care of. We started that last week, we're continuing that this week, and then on through the summer until, until softball, adult softball starts, which we are moving adult softball from the softball fields over to the baseball fields, so that we can address some of those issues at the softball complex.
Well, and to give you the benefit of the doubt, I mean, the rain has been a killer this spring, and it shows in all the numbers, I had Kelly run the numbers for June, January to June on revenue expenses, and I mean, you're ten thousand dollars short of concession break last year, you know, and that's because of being closed down, not playing games, your gates down twenty-five hundred, your registration is only about five hundred, you know, as far as income goes. But with that being said too, your expenses are down, you're umpired, you don't have to pay them because you canceled games, you're, so money-wise, you're being pretty consistent on your budget from looking springtime ball for the last few years, it's been pretty close.
Yeah, in his defense, he's broke stuff, and, and, I'll say again, we've had some spirited discussions, we, you know, drive a Christmas car, we get along, but it's.
Communications could be worked on.
Communications are always.
We had that discussion.
But, but, but money, I, I try to tell people, Bologna work and so, for what it does, on a two-point-nine million dollar budget, it's a supply, please, fire, and three hundred thousand, where are we gonna pay the road? You're doing amazing thing.
And.
And, 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 yeah, and, and it's tough on park and rec. Park and rec has been the biggest financial headache for me since I've been in this job, I don't know, James can probably say it, it was, you know, it's tough, but, I'll continue to work, I mean, you don't get any further questions? This was the best way I knew to do all this, and I, I.
Pretty much, is the season pretty much over now?
Yes, it's, spring season's over.
So this, again, I'm looking like you, Mark, I'm looking at the budget here, for our balance on this account. I know we can't do all four fields when I talk to softball now, because you're talking sixty to a hundred thousand dollars, that money just ain't fair. But could we not get two fields done? And then, after those, now we can start building up the funds again, get those next two fields.
Even if we did one field, it'd be better doing no field.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do this season, was to, to not spend a whole lot of money on just anything frivolous, and try to save as much as we could so that we could start doing the field renovations like we need to.
I just think that that's gonna be such a big cost, we're gonna probably have to pull it out of general, just because of the fact that the parks just doesn't, it is the lowest carryover we have every year, going into new year, it's the lowest income expenditure, you know, like it's.
Well, every other, so, so, no, every other fund gets some type of state or federal assistance at different times. Turnback monies and stuff that come into the general fund and come into the, park, it's, getting parks, people who belong, you spend here, stays here.
Even if we had to pull it out of general fund, I think having, one, the safety of the kids, but two, having that for the girls to play in Bologna, not going to another town, I mean, this is their community as well as ours, and they should have the facilities like everybody else. So even if we had to pull it out of general, I think it's important that we do that across the board, if it's a baseball field, if it's a softball field, we should give our kids a place to play, it's safe and correctly marked, and has a good scoreboard, and, and all of the same.
I put my financial hat on, I, I think, I think we can meet in halfway, if you'll give me an estimate on two fields, I'll bring you back here, I think the general fund could look at it half, I think we can go half and half.
Let's do one and parks together?
Yeah, yeah.
And that would take care of both of them at softball, is that?
I mean, oh.
I think something definitely needs to be done, yeah, on that, because otherwise, we need to suspend the program, somebody's gonna get hurt up there. That might cost more than a, than a field.
Mr. Shannon, one other thing I'd like you to look at, if we're having a problem with time to properly set the fields, or properly put out the equipment, or whatever, let's look at, instead of having three people at baseball and one at softball, maybe we move those around, or if the ladies in the concession stand help a lot with a lot of things, maybe they can go turn the scoreboard on or whatever. But if we need to move people around, or whatever we need to do, we, we need to make sure those fields are ready and appropriate when the girls get there to play.
We've only got one at baseball, and it's.
Just you, and then you have two at softball? So maybe it's communication there, very, if the field's not correct, period, it still looks bad on us as a city. So, it has to, I mean, it has to be correct, it has to be right. When the parents are paying for their kid to play, and their kid gets there, and they're falling on rocks, or they get there and the field is not the right size, or the pitching mound is not there, that just looks bad on us in general, and so we, we have to ensure that those things are done.
And I've, I've been in a lot of parks in my life, and there's always one little thing that may have gotten missed here and there, it's not the end of the world, everyone can kind of come together and understand that mistakes happen. So, again, I've not been made aware of a lot of these issues that are being brought up tonight, but, but, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm wanting the parks to be in the best shape they can be, I want the kids to have the best experience they possibly can be. And a lot of the changes I've made with the programs is bringing kids back into the program where our numbers are increasing with, with the players and all that kind of stuff, and the ones that, that have been in other places, they're starting to come back, so, they, they understand.
This was my other point, I'm sorry, about, that checking in on the school volunteers required to have something?
I know, you're really good at that.
I mean, I think we have enough parents that are involved in everything, that if you have a work day, you're gonna have enough people there. It's hot outside, but it's not hot at five AM or six AM, it's daylight, so, I mean, there's no reason, if we wanna get it done, we can get it done.
Yeah.
Well, the issues you, we brought into your attention, we did back and marked, I mean, I gave you a list full of stuff, there was an email to us from concerns and phone calls, so there's a, a lot of the issues that are being addressed tonight have been ongoing issues, not to, you know, but I get, it's been a rough season. I mean, I'm, but just clarify that, these issues have been brought.
Yeah, and I've, I've addressed a lot.
I think we're getting into that reprimanding employees.
No, we're just saying that we're, these issues been addressed before, they've been brought up.
It's, open discussion about the issues is a good thing to have.
I'm not saying.
Anybody have any, anybody have any further?
A lot of those issues that were brought up have been addressed.
No, and I, and I agree, and that's why I'm saying, y'all have scraped the edge of the field to where it drains better, y'all have placed a lot of electric.
I'd like to clarify, I think Councilman Craig was currently complimentary, more of in the center.
No, I mean, a lot of the issues, they've been addressed, I will give you that.
And I said we're all human, we all make mistakes, it's just that if the scoreboard's not working, someone calls you, I need you to answer, and I need you to get somebody over there to try to do it. It's communication.
Someone's gotta call me about it first.
Right, but I'm saying, when, when someone brings that up, even if it's something that can't be immediately resolved, let's give them the respect that they deserve, and we're gonna look into this, and let's look into this.
Yeah, and I do, when I'm made aware of issues or anything like that, I look into it and try to get it taken care of, it may not be the fastest way to get it done, but it'll be the one.
So on communications, you emailed us a few times throughout this spring season, I wanted to say I really appreciate that, that fills us in on what's going on in parks, so like week four, week five, you sent us an email, I would encourage you to continue doing that, at least on Monday.
I took them all coming in.
That, that was a very good thing, I really appreciated that, I emailed you back telling you that, I just wish it would have continued, I mean, you probably got busy and things slipped to the cracks, but try to make that communication a priority for us, please.
No, I, I tried to, the last few weeks, the season, we were fighting the rain and fighting all of that kind of stuff, so I can tell, I'm a computer person, very, very limited at that point.
All right, any further concerns or questions?
Not on that, because I have another question. Tournament was mentioned, and I'm trying to, was that canceled?
Yes.
What's the plans on the app?
I'm working with the tournament director to see if we can get it rescheduled for later this summer.
And I know we've invested a lot in this between concessions and field prep and.
Well, field prep was.
Gonna be done anyway, correct, but.
But, yeah, I'm getting with that tournament director to see if we can get that rescheduled, I'd like to bring some more tournaments in so that we can use that money for the fields, and eventually start using the tournament folks that wanna come in and play and pay the money to start paying for our, our kids playing.
Did?
So we can, we can reuse all that money into the bars and into, into our programs, and the folks that us, the community have funded, I want to update them on that.
Did you receive a copy of the most updated, which was two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Agreement and contract, like agreement for those deals and liability release, because those are important to make sure that we have update and filled out.
That'll have to be filled out for each tournament.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think it says start making forward.
Right.
Was it four inches, David?
And that, I, I've been thinking about it, maybe instead of fall ball, you know, we talked about.
There's, there's a few things that I'm thinking about for fall ball, I still wanna offer it because there are people in the community that want to have it. The numbers, because of volleyball, because of cheer, because of football, and because of, of basketball, the numbers have started to trickle down in the fall. I'm looking at different avenues of how we can keep baseball and softball going in the fall without going into the hole, so, I'm, I'm still working.
And tournaments might help support some of that.
Tournaments would be good, I, I've thought about a premier on team league, I'm trying to work through the logistics of all of that, and just kind of see if there's, there's any interest in, in that type of situation, so. But, yeah, there's, there's a lot of work to do, and there's a lot of, a lot of different avenues that it can be done through, so that's what I'm exploring right now.
Also, on the tournament contract, since it is kind of outdated, I think the pricing on it's a little wrong, kind of just doing rough math on utility costs, cost of chalk, paint, labor, everything, so I would encourage everybody to look over that too this summer where you have a chance, and get with us on updating the contract, you know, where it's two hundred dollars a field instead of one fifty.
Well, field, for, for, for dirt fields around central Arkansas, we go on rates of a hundred dollars per field, so if we want to have the tournaments, we gotta compete with that. That does cover the, that covers the labor to, to dress the fields, as well as the materials to chalk them and all that kind of stuff, so.
I disagree with that, I called around, and there's a lot of, I couldn't find a field for under a hundred fifty, anywhere turf or dirt, when I called around places, even looking on websites of different facilities around here.
Okay, the ones that I've called and talked to, it's a hundred dollars per field, so.
Well, I, doing math.
A nighttime tournament doesn't include the last, the last.
Well, and, but still, you have electric use on things in there, water, you'll have the paint, the chalk, all that, labor dress, redressing, is that included redress during the middle of the tournament, probably?
One, or the change of name.
So, I, I think you're, a hundred, I think you're losing, I really do, I think you need to go up on that, because that's actually less than what we were charging in nineteen.
If I could ask, in response to some of the concerns that parents have, do you have any kind of maintenance log or spreadsheet where this person called and said the scoreboard was messed up, and here's the date that you resolved it, or you received a phone call about they didn't like this umpire, and you resolved it? Like, is there any kind of accountability, this was the problem, this was the solution?
No, I don't have a spreadsheet or anything like that, but when someone files a complaint, that's I try to get it taken care of.
Could we get something like that, just because in the future, if someone comes and says, you know, I called twelve times because of the scoreboard, you would have a documentation of, no, you called on the bid and on the seven.
I think if you use the subdivision time, you could use like the.
The Yorche's. Like Yorche's would use for every other city complaint, I mean.
I mean, whatever we use, just, I think having some documentation would be good.
Ms. Mallon wrote a point, do you make complaints online?
Yeah, she did on the app, you actually have pictures now, our IT department has got that, where you can, if you have an issue with something, so that scoreboard's active, you know, you can take a picture or attach to it.
The download connect Bologna.
I have one other question that's brought up tonight, so it was mentioned tonight about having a club or a booster or a committee or something like that. Please explain your thoughts as to why you think that's a bad idea or a good idea?
It, it's a good idea in theory, and I've seen it work successfully, but with the amount of kids aging up at different times and all that kind of stuff, the, the best way to do that would be to have a coaches committee, and have a representative from each, each age group, you know, six U softball, eight U softball, all that kind of stuff. But the amount of turnover and kids leaving rec ball to go travel ball, or moving out and all that kind of stuff, the coaches change from time to time, so, it's also one of those places where you, you have a whole lot of people that wanna be in charge, and no one really wants to do the work. So, it can work, but it has to be the right people and the, the right mindset for it.
And I understand that, most definitely, in fact, it just, just listening to all of this conversation tonight, it just, like, maybe you're a little overwhelmed sometimes with all the.
That's the way it used to be before the city took over the parks. When, when the V C R A was running the, the baseball and softball program, there was a committee, and it was all volunteer ran, and it wasn't very successful. And I don't know when the city took over in oh-two? And I don't know when the city took over, '02? '03?
They can add them in.
I'm just wondering if, I'm just wondering if having a few other heads of the game, not trying to get crazy with it, but if that would be a sounding board for you to kinda help assist in, in planning and making sure things-
I do have that with the other parks directors that we're in the leagues with.
Okay.
So I, I do run stuff by example, run stuff by me, we come to the conclusion.
I'm just talking about with the governance of our particular parks right here.
Well, I think that, I mean, that's your job description is to do that. I mean, what would be the point of having you to lead a committee? Well, you know, I, and I, I agree, I mean, me and Terry don't say I on a lot of things, but I do agree with them on a committee that would run the parks. Currently, the soccer program, as an example.
I don't think the committee should run the parks program.
Well, but it was brought up as far as scheduling, you know, this, all that, the soccer program does that and they are hurting right now. The soccer program's gone down, I've talked to some of those people. I think it's not gonna be long before the city's gonna have to look at taking that program over and it's gonna be another headache.
It just seems like I'm hearing, what I'm hearing-
A booster club would not be a bad idea, where something to help raise funds for different projects, you know, maybe it's to help with doing different banner sales or painting logos on fields, whatever, digital scoreboards where you can add, sell ad space to where we can raise money to help do field improvements or places the booster club sees that needs to be done may not be a bad idea, look into it.
It just seems like everything's falling on his shoulders and, and I know he's the head, but maybe it's a little overwhelming sometimes with the tournaments and, you know.
I go back again, what people don't understand is we're limited on finances and, and we asked a lot of these employees, we asked a lot of the tradition Vanessa, we asked a lot of Corey and they do. I'd love to hire some more part-time people, but it's restricted.
And I don't think we're, I don't think we need to hire more people. I think the parents in our community have always been very good to help and to step up and coach or to help with the volunteer or cleanup. I think maybe just organizing some of those things would help you out tremendously.
And that's where a booster club-
And that's kinda my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kinda my point, something that, it's not anything that runs him, he's the head of it, just like the mayor's the head of this council. He's the head of it, but it's a sounding board of like these little issues that's coming up here where there could be some, you know, even the, the Bible says there is wisdom in multitude of counselors. So sometimes, sometimes we need people. I'm not asking for a group that's running him or running the parks or head honchos, kinda like to what Councilwoman Dean is stating, something that is an assistant, an assistant body, you know, something that's appointed by the mayor, three, four, five people that kinda makes it a sounding board.
I'm sorry, I think if you just put out there that at the beginning of each year, you want a group of volunteers, you're gonna get a, we have great parent involvement in the schools, in the football program, the cheer program, I mean, you're gonna get some help where right now, it seems like everything's coming to you, you're having to do it in less of importance, but what's important to you may not be the same as what's important to someone whose daughter fell on a rock. So if you had a group of parents that could help you do those things or them as your parents, community people, that could help you, whatever it is, I think if you put it out there and let them help you, I think you'll get that help because they want the fields to be just as good as everybody else does. They have the best interest in their child being there.
All right, any further discussion? I've just been very helpful myself and for that, that's the way things to be, whether nobody said or she said. Any further comments or questions for Terry? Terry, I'm gonna ask, I know this is asking, I'd like you to come back and be with the council for a couple of months at least. I know you're busy, the maintenance and try to keep some communication together in the middle of it. Give me some figures on those two tables.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry? All right, do you have any further discussion from any man?
I'm looking with Jerry.
All right, we'll stand at Terry.